Namaste everyone and a warm, warm welcome to Director Principal Dr. Amrita Vora, Assistant Principal Dr. Pallavi Mukherjee, HM's Coordinators, Teachers, Parents and all my wonderful peers. My name is Anvi Khanna and well in hindsight, it is kind of ironic to say warm because it is quite chilly and cold in the auditorium right now. But well, I don't know if I'm getting goosebumps because it's cold or because today, right now, we have in front of us.
Hold on, hold on, okay. I'm sorry to interrupt you right there. Before we move ahead, I think I should introduce myself. Good morning ladies and gentlemen, I am Abhas Kalia and we are your hosts for the day. Not only are we the hosts, we find Indian mythology extremely fascinating. I mean granted, most of our knowledge comes from all the stories our daddies used to tell us at night. But you know, you can clearly see the excitement here.
That's right and therefore with immense gratitude, we welcome our guest for the day. So everyone, please put your hands together for the star of the show, the man, the myth, the legend, Mr. Devdhar Patnayak.
Of course, he is one who needs no introduction, but we were politely requested to have one ready just in case. So you might know Mr. Patnayak from well, one of his TED Talks, perhaps from one of his over fifty illustrated books, maybe his radio show, his TV show or his absolutely fantastic beard.
A medical doctor by training, Mr. Patnayak spent over fifteen years working in the pharma and healthcare industry. And has spent the past decade immersing himself and exploring mythology and sharing his wisdom with the world. Mr. Patnayak is also a regular writer and expresses his ideas to the reputed columns of news publications like The Times of India and Rannig Bhaskar. His work on mythology, which he defines as cultural truths revealed through stories, symbols and rituals, has captivated audiences from around the world.
As you can see, we are extremely excited to have Mr. Patnayak up on stage to have the most engaging and sought after conversations with us. But I feel it is only fair that we keep in with the tradition we have here at Elpo International School. You know, no event has truly been inaugurated without an absolutely amazing artistic performance. So ladies and gentlemen, please give it up for Sambhavi Vaghah from Class 10. Thank you Sambhavi for that amazing classical number. You know, I really understand the excitement now. It took me a while to gather it, but now I can really see why you were so excited.
You know, Abhas, I think I'm going to have to quote the great Michael Scott and say, "Well, well, well, how the turntables." But with that, dear parents, teachers and students, we cannot possibly keep you waiting any longer. So please put your hands together for the one and only Mr. Devdhar Patnayak.
Hi, I'm just switching off my own phone. So good morning everybody, my name is Devdhar Patnayak. I write on mythology, so I'm often confronted with this question. Somebody and it happens for the last twenty-five years despite explaining, defining the term mythology. Always someone will come to me and say, "Sir, aap ye shabd kyu istmal karte hain mythology? Aap isko history kyu nahi bolte hain?" So this is a dialogue which I've heard and I think I'll hear it forever. And the reason is something to do with the way our mind functions. Our mind generally is very lazy thing, we don't like to work. So if you can do Ctrl-A, Ctrl-C, Ctrl-V, which is very popular, where you select something and copy paste. We will do that rather than writing something original. Our brain doesn't like new things, so when somebody comes to me with this question, I usually tell them, "Aapke paas phone hai, jaise aap phone hai, wifi hai, jaise aap wifi hai ya 4G hai, digital hai, to aise raabhi google kijiye, mythology ka definition kya hai?" And then they Google and I make them do this exercise. Then I tell them, "Google, what is history?" Now can you see there is a two different words with two different meanings, totally different. So when you ask me the question, before you ask me the question, did you Google this and check before asking this question? And most probably the students don't do that, people don't do that. They would rather, they have some assumption in their head, so when they're asking me a question, they are not seeking an answer. They are seeking, "Do I agree with them or not?" See the difference? Some people ask questions because they want to know something new. But many people ask questions because they want confirmation of something that is old. So in this group, there are about two hundred students here, parents here. Invariably, there will be people who will seek something new. And then there will be people who will say, "No, I'm comfortable with what I already know and I just want confirmation of what I am comfortable with." Which category do you belong to is the question. Do you want to know something new or do you want to stick with something which is old? And that is a question that you have to ask in every educational institute, right? The reason is because to find something new in this world, to discover something, to explore something, to invent something, is not easy, it's very difficult, it is very dangerous. Because you are going into the unknown which can scare you. You have to travel to different places that you have not seen, you have to deal with ideas that you have never encountered. And that requires a lot of hard work and nobody likes to do that hard work. I'd rather do something which I'm familiar with. For example, let's say you travel on a holiday to Switzerland. And you'll meet many Indians who travelled to Switzerland and say, "Even in Switzerland, I ate poha." And they're very proud of it. Or they go to New York and they'll say, "Even in New York, I ate kitlee." And they're very happy about it. And I say, "But isn't the point of going to another land to see?" Not only their land, but to experience what people over there eat. Because unless you know what other people eat, how will you experience the world? If you go to your friend's house carrying your own lunch dapa, how will you know what is cooked in your friend's house? And that is what discovery is all about. Seeing the other without judgment. Judgment is when you say something is better or something is worse. A good scholar never does that. Science, there is no judgment. If there is judgment, then it goes into the realm of economics, it goes into the realm of politics, the subjects I'm sure you're now learning. But science by definition does not have judgment, it has just observation. This is gold, this is silver. If you're studying chemistry, they'll tell you, "This is gold, this is silver, this is the chemical structure, this is the chemical structure, this is how gold works, this is how silver works." They will not say, "Gold is more valuable than silver." That an economist will tell you. Or gold is better than silver. If you're studying botany, they will tell you, "This is a fruit and this is a berry and this is a banana and this is a guava." But they won't tell you, they'll say, "This has more carbohydrates, this is more fat, this is an avocado." But they won't say you, "This is better than that." The moment you say, "This is better than that," you come into the applied fields, application in human life. So human beings like to judge. So human beings are two things, so till now, human beings are lazy and human beings like to judge. We don't like new things and when we encounter new things, we like to judge. That's how our mind works. So with this in mind, let's look at the words culture and globalization. What is culture? So nowadays, when we talk about a cultural program, it means somebody sings, somebody dances, that is the understanding of culture for most people. Culture basically means everything that you do that takes you away from being an animal. Animals don't have culture. Animals are animals, they're always what they are, hundred percent honest, animals can't lie to you, they don't know. A plant, an animal, they're hundred percent what they are. When humans look at nature, they say, "Hey, how can I make things better?" So we create culture. We create different kinds of culture. So we create Chinese culture, we create American culture, we create African culture, Indian culture. So at your home, you have your own culture. So animals go to eat, humans also eat. But the way you eat is very different from the way animals eat. You go to the market, you buy food, you cook food, you put it in the fridge, in other words, you have a culture. So that is how you understand, culture is everything humans do in order to survive. That is the meaning of culture. And everyone in this world has a different culture. Right now, it's Navratri. How many of you all in your families are following vegetarian practices? See, everyone did not raise their hand, why? Because different cultures have different practices. If you're a Bengali household, this is the time when a lot of fish and meat will be cooked. Yes, any Bengali friends? There it is. So now tell me if you say Indian culture, in Indian culture, does everyone follow one food practice? So then you realize, oh, there are different Indians, there are North Indians, there are South Indians, there are East Indians, West Indians. Everyone has a different culture. But then how is Indian culture different from Western culture or Chinese culture? Do you all eat Maggi noodles? Does that mean you all are Chinese? How many of you all use fork and knife? Does that mean you're Western? Animals don't use fork and knife, animals don't eat noodles, animals don't cook. Humans cook food. The first indicator of culture is that we cook. Khana hum pakate hain. Because humans discovered by cooking, we get access to lot of nutrients easily. We don't have to digest for long, it's very easy to get food. Most animals are afraid of fire, in fact ninety-nine point nine percent animals don't like fire. So first sign of being human is that you are not afraid of fire. You use fire, you can control fire. You can use fire to cook food. These are all signs of culture. So first sign of culture is food. Pakka khana, cook. That is how you understand culture. So culture is understood through food. So when you talk about, so I always look at people when they travel around the world and I say, "What have you eaten?" Har ghar ka pani pya hai, har ghar ka khana khaya hai. Then you will say, "No, but this food I will eat, this food I will not eat." You create rules. "I'll eat only once a day, I will eat it twice a day, I will eat before sunset." "I will fast, I will feast." Different people have different foods. So suddenly you realize, all human beings eat, but different people eat different foods. All humans eat cooked food. But everyone cooks food differently. So humans have culture because we eat cooked food. And different cultures have different foods, which is better food. The moment you say, "This food is better than that," you've started judging. And the moment you start judging, you will start having creating hierarchy. Once you create hierarchy, someone thinks, "I am better than you," somebody thinks, "I'm worse than you." The moment you start creating hierarchy, there will be fights. You will start fighting because my food is always better than your food. And that is how fight starts. So now, if you understand food, you will understand mythology. That is how you understand mythology. So people, when they ask me these questions about mythology, "What is mythology Devdhar?" I said, "Let us look at food." To understand mythology, you have to understand two words, fact and fiction. Fact is everybody's truth, sabka sach. What is everybody's truth? Everybody needs food. Everybody needs carbohydrates, fats, proteins, that is fact. Fiction, nobody's truth. Humans can live for two years without eating food. Fiction can't. You will die of dehydration, can live without water. So these are fictions, nobody's truth, nobody agrees with it, nein nein, aisa nahi hota hai. Or it's some fantasy stories. But between fact and fiction, there is something called somebody's truth. Kisi ka sach. That is myth. Tumhara sach, mera sach. You believe in something, I believe in something else. I believe the best food in the world is dosa. I believe the best food in the world is bread. I believe the best food in the world is noodles. I believe the best food in the world is McDonald's. Har log ka alag-alag vishwas hai. That is the world of mythology. So mythology is nobody's, sorry, somebody's truth. You have a truth, I have a truth and now, when you meet people, you want to know their truth. So what do you eat, what is there in your lunch dapa, what is there in my lunch dapa? I'm curious about knowing other people's truths. And when I learn about other people's truths, I move towards globalization. So let's say tomorrow, you get an American student, an exchange students with you. How do you deal with him? Do you treat him as a stranger initially, he's a stranger, doesn't know who he is, so you, your natural tendency would be, he's different, so your body gets uncomfortable with him. Then gradually, you will say, "Hey, I want to, I'm curious, who is this person? Where does he come from? What does he like, what does he not like, what does he eat, how does he dress, what are his hobbies? Which school did he go to, what were his teachers like, what was, what is his story?" Now you are going to have an interesting conversation with him. But if you judge him, "Oh, I don't like him, I don't like the way he sits, I don't like the way he eats, I don't like the way he dresses," you will start creating hierarchy. My food is better than his food. My dress is better than his dress. My story is better than his story. Now you have created hierarchy and this is how fight starts. So in Sanskrit, there are two words. Vivad, samvad. In vivad is debate. I am right, you are wrong. And that is what many a times we do in life, we are constantly debating. But if you really want to make good friendship, you really want to be a global citizen, you have to do samvad. Listen to people. Talk to people. Understand how they think. Then you will have a great friendship. Let me explain this through a story now. And this is all theory, let's listen to a story. And from a story, see how it happens. It's a story that you know. So I'm sure you're familiar with the Ramayan. And in the Ramayan, we are told that Hanuman reaches Lanka and he sees Sita. He sees Sita over there and he is going to come in front of Sita for the first time. But if you read the Ramayan, they will show how much he thinks before he comes in front of her. He doesn't come and says, "Ram has sent me, her is the ring he has sent me, this is my ID card." He doesn't do that, he thinks, he says, "I'm going to meet her for the first time." What is her truth? Can I understand her truth? A few months ago, she was in the middle of the forest. A hungry man came to her house. Out of kindness, she tried to give him food. But this hungry man turned out to be a demon. Caught her hand, picked her up and brought her to this island where she knows no one. She is scared. She doesn't know where she is, she's been brought against her will. She tried to do something good, give food to a hungry person. But that person took advantage of her, picked her up, brought her to a strange place and now she is terrified, she's surrounded by people, she does not know. She is frightened. Usko dar laga hai. If I go and jump in front of her, how will she react? She will say, "Another monster has come." A monkey who can talk. If a monkey who can talk came in front of you, how will you react? Will you say, "Oh lovely Hanuman has come?" That's because you have read the book. Sita has not read the Ramayan. So he's looking at her truth and says, "If I go in front of her and present myself, she will react violently, she will get frightened, she will withdraw." If I tell her, "I have been sent by Ram," she will, why will she trust me? She trusts no one at this moment because she is being kidnapped. She's scared. How do I get her trust? See how much thought is going before he starts talking to her. So step one, he throws the ring in front of her. Sita picks up the ring and says, "This is Ram's ring." Now suddenly her, for so many months, she had not for so many months, she had no knew, she didn't know where she was. She was wondering whether Ram would find him, find her and then suddenly she finds the ring. Now, she feels, could it be a little glimmer of hope? And then she looks up and then suddenly she sees a monkey. Now, she is not so hopeful. The monkey kuchh utha ke chori karke, idhar se udhar phik diya hai. And the monkey looks at her, tiny little form it takes. We all know that Hanuman can take any form, but he takes a very small form. Why? He wants to calm her down. Then he starts to talk. The monkey is talking strange, right? She is like, what is this? How can monkeys talk? And he says that you came flying through the air. If you can fly through the air, why can't monkeys talk? He uses logic. And she smiles. See how slowly he is comforting her. But the most interesting thing is, she is, in his mind, he says, which language should I speak? Because Hanuman can speak many languages. This is what language will Sita prefer to hear? Should I speak Sanskrit or Prakrit? Because when the Ramayan was written, women were not allowed to speak Sanskrit. She says, if I speak Sanskrit, she may think that I am a rakshas like Ravan who speaks Sanskrit. So, which language should I speak? How much thought is going to make Sita comfortable? Finally, Sita listens to him, talks to him. She says, Ra, she says, how do I know? Sita says that you are definitely Ramadutta. How do I know? What is it? How can you give me confidence? And he says, I will tell you a story that only you and Ram know. I knew before coming here, when I was coming here, Ram gave me the ring and said, give this to Sita. And I told Ram that she may think I have stolen this ring. This is the ultimate Aadhaar card. I should tell you something that only you know and Ram knows. If I can tell you this, then you can trust that I have been sent by Ram. What is that story? You have to read my book for it. See, now you are, hopefully you are curious. Because if you are curious, you will learn something new. Everything will not come so easily. Right? But the point of the conversation is, how do you deal with strangers? That is what mythology teaches you. Mythology is about learning about other people. Who is the kaikai in your life? Who is the kaushalya in your life? Who is the Bharat in your life? How do other people look at you? Do they look at you as kaikai? Kaikai is gender neutral, ha, by the way? Kaikai has nothing to do with a woman. It has to deal with jealousy. And anybody can be jealous. Uska beta raja banega, mera beta raja nahi banega. You see that, no? Jealousy is everywhere. Anger is everywhere. Look at Dashrat. He wants a son. He gets four sons. But when he dies, not one of his sons are with him. He dies alone. Two sons in the jungle, two sons in their uncle's house. No matter how much you plan, plans fail. So, now when you start reading the Ramayan and Mahabharata, it's not a story, it's about human beings. And each of the emotions that you find in these stories is within you. You can be Ravan. You can be Sita. You can be Hanuman. You can be Sugri, Wali, Jambavan. All the characters have certain qualities that you will find inside yourself and in people around you. Now, that is what makes the Ramayan and Mahabharata interesting. But that's not the only stories in the world. If you want to understand American culture, what stories must you read? If you want to understand China, what stories must you read? If you under, if you want to understand, if you want traveling to Nigeria or Kenya or Uganda or Egypt or New Zealand, what story must you read? What food must you eat? What clothes must you wear? Each and everything helps you experience the world better. That is what mythology is all about. Listening to other people's stories, observing other people's rituals, understanding what it says about life. Let me tell you the oldest story in the world. Does anybody know what is the oldest story ever written? The oldest story ever written in this world, written is the Epic of Gilgamesh. Epic of, have you ever heard of Epic of Gilgamesh? So, Epic of Gilgamesh was written in a region known as Mesopotamia. What is it called today? What is, which country is Mesopotamia? It's Iraq. Iraq, Iraq. Iraq is Mesopotamia. India used to trade with Mesopotamia through the Harappan civilization. How do I know this? Because you read. This is all on Wikipedia. And since you all have phones and you all have access to wifi, theoretically, you all have access to this information. Epic of Gilgamesh is about a king of Uruk. His, he has a very good friend called Enkidu. Gilgamesh lives in a city, in a great city, but Enkidu lives in the forest. They become great friends. They go on many adventures. But then one day, Enkidu dies. He dies because he is attacked by a wild animal. And Gilgamesh is shocked and he says, what is this? My best friend has died. And at night, he gets a vision. His friend Enkidu appears before him and describes life after death. He says, this is a place without sunlight, without wind and the only thing you can eat is dust. Can you imagine the description? There is no sunlight, there is no wind and there is only thing to eat is dust. And Gilgamesh gets scared and says, I want to not die. I must never die. I want to live forever. And he goes in search. He says, how will I live forever? And then he is told, there is a man called Ut Napishtam. Meet him. He is the only man who has never died. He may be able to tell you how to live forever. And he goes to meet this man and he says, you are living forever? He says, yes. I am the only one in this world who survived the flood. What flood? It is long ago, humans used to feed the gods. And then the gods got angry with humans because we didn't feed them well. So, they decided to bring a great flood to destroy the world. But since I used to feed the gods properly, one of the gods told me, make a boat. Sit on the boat with your family. When the flood comes, your boat will stay afloat and everything else will be destroyed. And the gods will forgive you and give you immortality. Have you heard this story somewhere else? Noah's Ark. The same story is found in Vishnu Quran. Manu and his boat. The earliest word, Vishnu Quran is how many years old? Five hundred AD, fifteen hundred years ago. But the story is even older. It is found in Shatapata Brahmana, which is seven hundred BCE. Which is twelve hundred years before Vishnu Quran. See how old I am going back. See, I am connecting now. I am giving you history lesson. Five hundred years Vishnu Quran, five hundred AD Vishnu Quran, seven hundred BC, Shatapata Brahmana. Noah's Ark. How many years old? If you are curious, you will search for it. How many years ago was Epic of Gilgamesh written? At least three thousand BCE. Three thousand BCE. Google it. Gilgamesh asked Ut Napishtam, can you give me the herb of immortality? And Ut Napishtam says, I will give it to you if you can stay awake for seven days. But Gilgamesh cannot. He is the strongest man in the world, but he can't stay awake for seven days. In fact, he is so tired that he sleeps almost immediately and he wakes up after seven days. And Ut Napishtam says, just as every human being has to eventually go to sleep, every living creature eventually has to die. And I have seen people die in front of me. It is not great to be immortal. See, what an interesting story about life, death, rebirth, written five thousand years ago. Repeated in the Bible as Noah's Ark. By the way, do you know what is Noah called in the Islamic tradition? In the Persian books, Noah is called Nu, N-U, pegamber nu. How do I know this? Wikipedia and curiosity. See, Wikipedia can have the information, but if you are not curious, you will never find it. And as I said, fifty percent of you will not be curious. Kya farka padta hai? So what? It's a very clever way of saying I am lazy. And that is normal. It is nothing great, good or bad. That is what humans are. We like being lazy. But if you want to discover new things, learn new things, you have to be curious. And if you are curious, you have to ask questions. And that is what culture is all about. Culture is about figuring out your life. I was telling somebody today morning, the difference between culture and civilization is, culture is how humans live in nature. Civilization is when humans exchange things with each other. A civilized person exchanges goods, services and ideas. I hope all of you are civilized. Do you share stories with each other? Ideas with each other? Food with each other? Only then you will be civilized. So, I hope you take this journey of culture and globalization to be civilized. Thank you. We'll.
Thank you very much, sir.
Maybe you can have a. Oh, you use this mic.
Thank you very much, sir. That was exactly what I expected and much more. In having followed you for quite a while now, it was truly exceptional to hear you speak in person. Uh, now we will be opening the floor for questions by the members of the audience. We have uh, two council members in the audience. If anyone has any question, please raise your hand up, shoot your hand up and we will get to you.
Uh, good morning, sir. Uh, it is said that a lot of learning takes place outside of classrooms. So, is there something you would like to comment about on Elkro International School's approach on this? And will it hold the children in, um, yes, sir. And do you think it would hold the children in good stead in the future?
See, you can learn everywhere. It doesn't matter where you are. Geography doesn't decide how much learning and what to learn. Schools just teach you how to learn. That's all. Learning, you will learn yourself. Nobody teaches you. Teachers, a teacher can only teach you how to learn. And that's the only thing a teacher does actually. We don't realize it. It is not the teacher's job to teach you mathematics. You learn mathematics. They only teach you how to learn mathematics. So, that's the one, if you remember this, you will realize you are learning all the time. Nobody tells you to do it. You, if you don't want to do it, don't do it. I always tell, that somebody says, meri ko nahi padna hai, mat padu. Uska consequences hota hai. So, that is the thing. Learning is difficult because the brain is lazy. And we like being lazy, but the brain will, you have to force yourself and gradually it becomes a habit. And you will learn everywhere. Everywhere you go, wherever you see, you can find knowledge wherever you want.
Uh, very good morning, sir. Um, my question is that, uh, basically I have this belief where, uh, every single story that I have heard throughout my life regarding gods, goddesses, basically mythology. Um, all of this, I believe is, uh, they were all humans and they did good things and hence through, um, being passed down generation to generation verbally and then written, it became legend and then myths. Is this ideology justified?
Well, you have used many big words, ideology, legend, myth. Google each one of them. And that's your ideology, no? Why do you need me to approve it? It's your truth. Accept it. It doesn't have to be the truth. It is what you believe. It's your belief. Just as some people believe in God, some people don't believe in God. Both are justified. You believe in something, someone else doesn't believe in it. Both are true. So, don't seek other people's approval of it or even if someone is an expert, they don't know the truth. I just know a little bit more than you do. And I know that there are people who believe in what you believe. And there are many people who don't believe in what you believe. And both are right. But if they read more books, maybe they will change their mind.
Good morning, sir. Good morning, sir. In your expansive body of work, mythology has been an integral part. So, how do you think we can inculcate, uh, reading mythologies in the school curriculum?
Uh, step one, buy my books. Yeah? Step two, open the books and actually read them. And step three, discuss it with other people who have read the book. To do these step one, step two, step three, you will inculcate it in your life.
Um, good morning. Uh, good morning, sir. So, at Elkro International School, we have different curriculums and children as young as years old with us. So, do you think preschool is an appropriate time for the children to expo, to get exposed to themes and values related to mythology?
Well, you are always, uh, I will give you a simplest example of mythology. A little baby is running. Then the baby falls and hits the stone floor and starts to cry. What does a parent typically do? What does a parent typically do?
Guide him or like what Indian parents do, like hit him back, like...
Do they hit the child?
No, not, no, not the child, like to make the child comfortable, like isne marana.
Ah, so they hit the?
Yeah.
They hit the floor?
Yes, yeah.
Has the floor done anything wrong? But now the child has been taught by the parent, when you make a mistake, blame others.
Yes. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Good morning, sir. So in your book Jaya, The Retelling of the Mahabharat, I've noticed that you, instead of going with the original format, you went with the yajnaad, which Janma Jay did. What inspired you to, you know, write it in that format? I've always wondered.
So it's very interesting that you are saying that I did not follow the original format.
No, no, that's not what I...
Because if you actually look at the original format, it is the way Jaya is written.
I see.
So Jaya, the Mahabharat, Google it. Go to Google, say about the oldest translation of the Mahabharat. It's there, freely available online at no cost. And it begins with Janma Jay's sacrifice. The problem is Amar Chitra Katha did not do that. And since we consider Amar Chitra Katha and B.R. Chopra Ramayan on TV to be original, we think that this is an innovation. So you see, how we assume things. We assume that what we see on television is real. What we read in Amar Chitra Katha is real. A scientific mind will always challenge and doubt. The rule of science is doubt. The rule of religion is trust. So that is how you figure out whether a person has a scientific mind. His doubts without judgment. Judgment should not be there. If there's judgment, again, it comes back to the realm of religion and faith. So next time when you're reading a book, ask what is the original? Which, where did this structure come from? So the original story comes from Sarpa Sutra, the Yaj. And the whole Mahabharat is a story to tell why you should not fight a war. Because when you fight a war, if you read the Ramayan and Mahabharat carefully, nobody wins. In the end, the Kauravas die. All the children of the Pandavas die. And Krishna gets cursed. So fighting doesn't help anyone. But we are always told, fight and you shall win. But not the Mahabharat. Yeah?
Thank you, sir.
Hello, sir. Good morning. First of all, just put it out there, if I'm a bit shaky and jittery, it's because of my coffee kicking in right now. So I have two points to mention. Number one, I really love the way we saw the same story come in different works, like for example, the Noah's Ark. And secondly, in the talk, we brought about how we can see various cultures through food. Like for example, if someone loves tosa, someone loves noodles, et cetera. And we shouldn't judge that or else we'll start establishing hierarchy. But in your talk, you also mentioned that fifty percent of us are not going to go and, you know, search for it or not gonna be, or would not be curious. So isn't that technically also judging and putting up that hierarchy that some people would Google and some won't?
So differentiation is not judgment. If I say you are a girl and he is a boy, I am stating two facts. I'm not saying one is better than the other. When I say someone is lazy, it's a description. It's not a criticism. See, sukshma, subtle things. Judgment is one is better than the other. Lazy people are important. Right? Because everybody cannot become senior, no? So those who are lazy will form the foundation of society. Those who are curious will rise up. If everybody is curious, nobody will form the foundation of society. Yeah? If everybody was curious about mythology, then why would you read my books? Yeah? So it's good that people are not curious about mythology. I can keep writing my books.
Alright, thank you so much.
Oh, very good morning, sir. So you have written many books which also...
It's a book. It's, just hold it. It will go.
So you have written many books which also include mythology books. The Boys Who Fought, The Girl Who Chose, Farin Dev Lok and Pasu, et cetera. Why not condoning the superhero books and comics? They are amazing in their own way. But how can we instill interest in children for the mythological superheroes which we have in our own mythologies? How can a school play a role, a significant role in building the interest in kids?
See, access is the simplest method. We don't give people access to different. For example, how much Hindi literature have you read?
So eighth grade, unless I chose the Sanskrit.
So that's the thing, access. Is there, do you have access to these things? Marathi literature. We're in Pune. We don't get access. And we don't have time, of course, because there's so much homework, there's so much to do, you have to prioritize your time. So what you do is, you are flooded with superhero stories. Disney is giving it to you, everybody is giving it to you. So now somebody around you has to decide how do they expose you to other food. It's like food, right? If every day I get ads, KFC cow, McDonald's cow. But then one day you say, no, 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 I want to eat pani puri in my building society. Now, they has not advertised, but you see it every day and you're curious and you go and eat and you experience something new. And then your palate says, oh, you know, that food is interesting, but this food is also interesting. And then you say, I want to see how my mother cooks and I want to see how my grandmother cooks and how my grandfather cooks and how grand... Everybody cooks differently. And then you're, it's about how your mind functions. So it is not other people's responsibility to teach you. It is your responsibility to learn. All they can do is make it available. Right? So you have, I think this is eleventh and twelfth standard. So you all are not children anymore, technically, right? Each one of you all doesn't want to wear the uniform anymore. Right? So now, nobody else is responsible for your life. That is means you have become bigger. You are responsible for your own life. So schools cannot give you exposure. You have to expose yourself. And as I said, everybody has got a phone. Everybody got a wifi. Everybody knows how to Google. So everything is available. Yeah? So just go and, and when you start making this a habit, instead of Instagram, suddenly you will rediscover a world which is very addictive because you learn so many new things. And in whatever field, if you're in physics, chemistry, biology, I'm in mythology. Somebody will talk on cricket, somebody won't talk on football. Somebody will talk on crochet, somebody will talk on embroidery. There is a whole world out there to learn. Yeah?
Thank you so much, sir.
We take three more questions. Three more questions. Yeah?
Good morning, sir. So we know Elpro International School has like a powerful reading community. And we have introduced concepts such as Book Week, Human Library in School, and also have a reading club as a part of our hobby club's activities. So I would like to ask you, do you think reading any book can cultivate a love for mythology in children?
No. Reading is just the first step. You know, I remember my nephew once saying that I read it. So I told him, tell me the story. What did you read? He says, no, I read it. I didn't understand it. Right? So a school can only expose you and create these systems so that you read. But ultimately, do you of your own free will pick up a book? Or do you read it only because under pressure? That's the question you have to ask yourself. And it's very difficult to read. It's like going to the gym or doing anything in this world. You need someone to coach you, put some pressure on you. But after some time, it has to become internal. That is a difficult thing. But once that happens, any subject in the world becomes easy. But initially, you do need a little bit of push, a little bit of push. It's not easy. So we should recognize that reading, learning is as difficult as any physical activity. See, you know, if you're running, any athlete in the room knows how difficult it is to learn a new technique. Some dancer knows how difficult it is to learn. But first, are you interested? Schools will expose you to this. And then over time, you will figure out, okay, this I like, this I don't like, this I enjoy, this I don't enjoy, this I have to do, but this I want to do. So same thing with books. The school creates an ecosystem to give you access to the books. But ultimately, you have to take it upon yourself.
Good morning, sir. So do you think adapting mythology at any grade level curriculum would help children understand Indian values and Indian cultures any better? And what impact would it likely have on them and their outlook?
I think it will happen if you compare and contrast it with other cultures. So for example, I have a book called Eden, which talks on stories from Jewish, Christian and Islamic traditions. It's a very different stories from Arab, Arab countries, from Persian countries. There's Greek mythology. It's very different. I told you the story of Mesopotamia, Gilgamesh. You have to compare that story with Indian stories and see the difference between the two. It's like, how do you understand Indian food by comparing it with Chinese food? Right? Not the Desi Dhaba Chinese. But let's say you get access to a, or a Japanese food. Let's say you eat sushi. And then you eat dal bhat. And now you see the difference between sushi and dal bhat. Now, when you compare and contrast, you understand your culture better. Yeah, I'll give you an example. Chinese food, in China, bamboo grows a lot. So they used to use cooking using bamboo. Fire is lit with bamboo. And in India, we use kowdang. Kowdang is used. Now, if you know a little bit of physics and chemistry, you will know that fire from a kowdang is very different from a fire from a bamboo. Bamboo fire is flames. And kowdang fire is very soft and gentle. So Chinese food is always cooked fast. That's why you have stir fried chicken. But with kowdang, you have to boil food very slowly. So dal takes a long time to cook. You put it in the morning, it will cook by the afternoon. Now you have pressure cookers. But you can't make instant dal. You can't do stir fried dal. It takes a long time to cook. So Indian food demands patience. Lambana, which is better? Indians ko poocho, Chinese ko poocho? But now you know the difference. So now you understand a little bit more about India and now you know a little bit more about China. That's how you expand your mind. Yeah? One more, last question.
Check. Hello, sir. So I want to start by saying that I really resonate with how you talked about how the roots of philosophy of life and death are present in mythology. But I've always had one question with regards to that. And that is, is there any ideal way to perceive mythology? Or do you think there is an ideal way to perceive mythology? Because mythology and religion are very closely interconnected and often, and I personally have very different perceptions about the two of them separately or individually. But you know, a lot of people, because of this interconnectedness, I don't entirely agree when I tell them that I have different perceptions on the two of them as an individual. So again, like I said, do you think there is an ideal way or a particular way where we as individuals should perceive mythology?
So, there is no ideal way. But I always check, someone says I'm religious. I just check whether they're kind people. Because it's more important to be kind than to be religious. It's more better to be nice than to be an expert. So I don't care if a person is an expert or a religious person or a spiritual person or follows a guruji or is an activist or is a politician. I just check, are they nice people? Nice people respect other people's ideas. Right? So if people don't respect your point of view, how does it matter whether they are religious or spiritual or intelligent or rich or powerful? They just lack the courtesy to respect other people's truth. That's the only thing you have to check.
Alright, sir. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, sir. Thank you. I know all of you all have questions, but we will have to bring the Q and A session to an end unfortunately. But I do know that sir would be very happy to receive emails, DMs, and if you are lucky enough, he'll reply to you. So let's keep the Q and A going. Let's keep the myth, mythology, you know, wave on. Sir, thank you so much. It was, to at least to say, a very, very enriching session with so many thoughts and so much food for thought, actually. You know, a lot of takeaways. Thank you. Sir, we have a small request. You know, a couple of my students would just like to take a picture with you and get autographed books. So if you can be stood there? Yes, these are the elected student reps. With this, we come to the end of this fantastic session. Thank you to Mr. Devdatt Patnayak. Thank you to all the guests who were a part of this session, the academic leadership of Elpro International School, parents and my very dear students. Thank you for those amazing questions. After two minutes, you all will please politely and in respect and in discipline leave the auditorium, yes, and back to your classes. And a lot of discussion should happen in the classrooms today. And a lot of discussion should happen in the classrooms today.